The item is the O S O Office for Member and Council.
Okay. I, Dennis Rome, do solemnly declare that I am a Canadian citizen. I'm a full age of eighteen years, that I'm a lecturer in the municipality of Oakmont. He said that I'm not disqualified under any provision of the municipal act or any other act of the legislature from being a member of the council. The municipality of Oakmont, he said, that will act faithfully in the office of council of the fear, favor, or affection, and will truly faithfully and impartially, under the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the duties and responsibilities of the office. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true, and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if being under oath by virtue of Canada Health Act.
Okay, since we have a new member of council, I'll just remind everybody, these are formal meetings. If you wish to address to speak at the meeting, you'll have to request speak by holding your hand up. If you are given the request, rather than the request, then you will be addressing the chair. You'll address it as Mr. Chairman, Mr. Head of Council, or your worship. When we understand that, we'll move forward. Be resolved that the agenda for this September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting be accepted as presented. So please move that. Council McDonald. Secondaire Consular Hatch. All in favor? The commission of ministry is all for the best in the obvious eighteen, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of council be agreed by approved that circulated. Movement, Council Fisher, secondaire, also McGregor, discussion, air, air, provisions. All in favor? Under general account finance, being resolved at the September fifth, twenty twenty-three general accounts payable, being checks number six, six, eight, four, to six, seven, four, two. The amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, forty-six dollars and five cents be hereby approved. Council McDonald. I can do counsel McGregor, discussion. All in favor? Be resolved that direct deposit two eight zero being stat payroll for the period August seventh to August eighteen, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents be hereby approved. I'm going to move that. Council Fisher, secondaire. Council Jones, discussion. All in favor? Be resolved that direct deposit two eight one being election payroll for the period August seventh to August eighteen, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three dollars and seven point four cents be hereby approved. Move that. Mr. McDonald, secondaire of council McGregor. Discussion. All in favor? Eric. Be resolved that direct deposit two eight two being stat payroll for the period August twenty-first to September first. Twenty twenty-three, in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eight cents be hereby approved. Move that. Council Hatch, secondaire Consular Fisher. Discussion. All in favor? Be resolved that direct deposit two eight three being council and deputies for the month of August twenty twenty-three, in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, ninety-nine cents be hereby approved. Officer McGregor moves it, secondaire. Officer McDonald, discussion. All in favor? Under the utility account, be resolved that the September fifth, twenty twenty-three utility accounts payable, being checks number one, zero, six, zero, to one, zero, seven, zero, in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty. Hereby approved. Officer Fisher, secondaire. Council Hatch, discussion. All in favor? Be resolved that the state from the revenue and expenditures report to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three be received as presented. Move that. Secondaire, Council Pitt Jones. Discussion. All in favor? Be resolved that the bank reconciliation for the month of August twenty twenty-three be approved as previously circulated. Please move that. Constable McGregor, secondaire. Council Fisher. Discussion. All in favor? Eric. There's a resolution there. See, don't think that. Be resolved in what I think I'm going to step up into customer, we can. Be resolved that a cover be installed and driveway slope to drain to the. Be resolved that the presentation by Derek Shear related to what the little pond development received. Discussion. All in favor? Eric. Be resolved that a public be installed and driveway slope to drain to the east at two oh four Commercial Street, on East Nanatogo, the cost being built to Walonisa, where the little housing. I get a mover. Jones, seconded by Council McDonald. Discussion. All in favor? And further, that work be completed by September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, whereby if the little housing wishes to choose their own contractor to complete work, let it be a deadline on September twenty-second for completion of the work by the property owners. Contractor of choice. That should have been the first one, eh? Okay, so who was I moving on that?
Officer Jones.
Okay, Jones and. Are you guys okay with being moving second or dinner?
Yes.
Yeah. Let's just vote again, this word. All in favor? Be resolved that the minute that the administration prepare the necessary amendments to building approaches policy, T R A and S zero, zero, eight, to include all residential properties within the municipality for subsequent council consideration. I didn't move right. Council Jones, second by Council Hatch. Any discussion? Council McDonald.
And just, just to be clear on this, then, so we are. Amendments to the policy is that, that's just so they will. I guess we, do you know anything?
Sure, yeah.
Just so we know.
Yeah, so this was very best, so we do have a, an approach policy, but right now it only applies to areas outside of Walonisa, so. Amend it so that it covers off installation of driveways and, and settlement areas as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? Do you want to speak to it?
I want to know if that's just one driveway or two. Like a project or just on the east side?
Just on the east side, yeah. Further discussion? All in favor? Eric. And be resolved that the administration seek solicitor advice on the preparation of a drainage bylaw applicable to the municipality for subsequent configuration. Council McDonald, secondaire, Council Fisher. I can speak to this, so right now, we have no drainage bylaw in place, so when a new development happens, there's no, we simply control or oversight of council or municipality, so. We need to be a little bit careful with this, because if we. Overdo it with a policy, then it's going to create a lot of expense and probably prevent development, but we also want to make sure that development that does happen has drainage considerations. This is just to instruct the administration to start the process.
Again, this is just some village, right? We got a drainage policy for the roof, right? I don't believe we have a drainage policy anywhere.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Clarifying, thanks.
No, I believe that water services oversees drainage, really. But I don't think they oversee it in towns and villages, or would that be accurate?
That's right.
Yeah.
It's our jurisdiction.
It should be, it's municipal jurisdiction within the village, the town, or town, right?
I'm not sure if that's correct when it comes to building of structures. That would be correct when it comes to ditches and waterways. Yeah, but in, in the rural area, if someone wants to build a new house, does water services board get involved in that? My understanding is that.
Things, I don't think with the house, but anything to do with the ditch raise, or if there's water involved, yeah, the solicitor, solicitor.
I don't think that there's ever been any. Drainage control by anyone as far as hoses that I work with. That I wear up. You're responsible for your own landscaping, just doesn't apply the same as the town.
It could, right? Depending on the area, we can have some areas that are starting to get built up, so. So anyways, we're not voting on the actual policy, we're voting on a, a direction of council to start to develop.
And that was seconded by Council Fisher.
Need further discussion? All in favor? Eric. You're good, Dave. Pass the chair back to you. Yes.
Okay, under the order of communications, there was one. Age friendly Manitoba on the Pauline collaboration grant from best location of Manitoba municipalities. August eighteen, August twenty eighth, September first. September eighth, the one on September eighth, was talking about asset management training is. We can send to people if anybody is interested in that, if it's on October eighteen. Well, there's three different sessions, but the one in Brandon is on October eighteenth of Seaford Center. There's also one October sixteenth, and Jonathan, and October twenty. In Winnipeg. Councils, let me know if you are interested in.
Do we have any staff that will be included?
Well, this is.
Just strictly.
Here is more for elected officials, but staff and attend, yeah. If no councils are interested, I might go in. Under communications, election Manitoba, support for voter registration voting. From Federation of Canadian Municipalities, there is a communicate on August fourteenth, August twenty eighth, and September fifth. There was information from Manitoba Hydro on a new overhead line installation. Manitoba Onsite Waste Water Management Association Septic Awareness Week twenty twenty-three. Municipal World. Respect, promoting similarity in local government. From Prairie Mountain Health, here's information on the therapy dog team, and. Thank you to the municipality and to public works from the Walonisa children.
It's resolved that the above noted communications be received. Move that, please. Council Jones, secondaire Consular Donald. All in favor?
Okay, we'll go to committee. I mean, your first was one more to three. Council Fisher, you have written a report, anything to add to it?
And I don't think there's anybody in this group that drives as many gravel roads as I do. I go that way for machinery repairs to go that way to check cattle, and I go north to Brandon, and I drive gravel roads every day, so. And as far as I'm concerned, we're doing a bang up job right now, so.
Okay, everything? Six. Council Jones, you know, nothing to report here, no. Council Hatch, word two, you have written a report, anything to add?
And I do, I think we have to, I had. A method road, we need to either. We had. Non-taxpayers, potatoes hauling down method road because the D O Ts directed them to go that way. Either we have to apply more calcium on that road, or reduce speed for next year. Or have a chat with the, the authorities about why they're directing them off the bridge of Walonisa.
Okay, so what we should do is put that into the transportation committee meeting, so that we can have that project, maybe other course, put that down for.
Yeah.
Intertransportation meeting, maybe. That's my report, she, first here. And I saw, sir, anything to add, sir?
Just a reminder that the tax sale is next week. Here.
Yeah.
On Tuesday, September nineteenth, and one thirty, if anybody's interested, it's in a ten. We have proper use of the tax service.
Other works, you have written a report, anything to add to it? There are a few reporters there. Be resolved that the verbal and written reports be received. Excuse me, I'm sorry, customer. New Consular, Rome.
Mister Chairman, I had a call a couple days ago from. A repair on Turkey Ranch Road, and I guess as a result of the clay cap that took place there. And some of the large stones that were left on the road, they were graded off the road and into the, of the ditch area. He actually sent me a picture of all the stones that they picked out of the dishes, just wondering if public works, but. If you haven't already, take a look at that, in those areas where the roads were clay capped, to see if there's. I mean, there are huge problem for the moor. And I mean, it's, it's just a situation that should be looked at, but still. He, he had quite a bunch of stones he picked, so many big ones.
I'm sorry, you asked him to us to know to come with it, or?
Well, maybe what they can do is.
Well. I think, I think if you have a look at it and kind of assess it, would be my suggestion, and, and I don't know whether you can take further down into the ditch, so that away from the moor. Would you, I, I believe we still have a loader, or? Do we not, I noticed a rock picker pulled out. In the municipal, but municipal shop in Aspen, is that functional or no?
It's functional, I guess it depends on the ditch, on the slope and.
Yeah. Yeah, well, if, if the moor, probably the tractor can operate there, there's a pretty good chance, because the, the rock picker's offset from the tractor as well, so. Yeah, I mean, it just, it's just a recipe for disaster with the moor, so.
The only thing is that the rock picker is so big, and the moor is fifteen feet, right?
Yeah. It, I'm just saying it's worthy of a look. I mean, they, it should be moved out of the path of the moor, that, in one way or another, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look, and I'll see what we can do, if it's machine worthy, then absolutely, but to pick them all like that, and I, I think I know. I've had that conversation with somebody as well.
Yeah.
It's just so time consuming that everything else would be put to a halt, right? So, if it were.
Can, can you, maybe what you do is contact Bruce who does moing, see what he has to say about that, and get that to maybe, again, into the transportation meeting?
Yeah.
Take a look at it, and see what has to be.
Right, sure.
Because we're on the rocks are direct result of the carbide tip blades that we put on one of the grinders. And it basically took all the washboard out of the road, but that's what you end up with is rocks being grooved up to.
Oh, sure, I mean, that's, that's normal course of operation over the years that happens, but. They indicated that this was a result of, of rocks from the clay capping up. It doesn't really matter to me how, you know, how, what the result was, I guess that they're.
Every road up my way has multiple surface rocks.
And so.
And that's with no click happening.
So there, there, as I say, a huge hazard for the moors, and anybody passing those moors, if the rocks picked up, it's, it's coming out off those more plates, so. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Chelsea will talk, I have dealt with that, so we will talk after.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, be resolved that the verbal and written reports be received, so please move that. Council McDonald, secondaire. Council McGregor. All in favor? Eric. Okay, we have unfinished business, it has to do with. See. So, so reconsideration. Last meeting, be resolved that motion number three oh four, July fourth, twenty first, twenty twenty-three, the effective payment for dust control be reconsidered. Please move that. Secondaire, Council Hatch, discussion. Sir, Chairman, can we get some information why this has been put forward? In regard to, this is a payment to. Yeah, no, sorry, that's coming from my council requesting, could you give some feedback on why he's asking for it?
Three of us toured the council applied areas after we had decided that. What we were given instructions that possibly didn't work properly, we did tour areas, found that the actual dust control did work. Not as good as previous applications other years, so we reconsidered that we should pay the bill. Because it was, was doing not perfect at dust control, but some dust control.
Mr. Chairman, so you're suggesting that we now pay the full bill? Just for clarity? So. It just seems odd to me that the contractor was called up three times and, and just kept doing the same thing over and over and going.
It was.
For each time.
It was poor quality calcium from what we can see, but it did do dust control. Probably we will never hire these guys again to do the job, because it was inadequate. But still providing some dust control. Council Fisher and. Dave Perklich, and I toured it one morning, and yes, it was definitely signs of reduced dust.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just feels to me like the vendor, the contractor, whoever we're referring to, should be taking some responsibility here, like. It seems odd to me that we kept calling, saying it's not working, and they just kept coming in and doing the same thing and sending another bill.
Maybe Chelsea can give you a little more info on how many passes they did, or?
Sure.
What, what happened in each pass, like, I think the, my, my understanding is the first pass wasn't done very well, the higher man is there.
The first time, I was in a meeting and wasn't able to go with them. They took, another employee took them out, did one pass down the middle. So when I went out, I said, well, this isn't what we wanted. So they came back to do two whole passes, probably should have done it originally, but that wasn't their fault, they weren't told that. Also, when I realized that it wasn't working that well compared to last year. I found out it is a different, it's a different solution, right? So what I was told was the solution doesn't work that well with the makeup of our gravel. So last year we had four distributors do it, which has a way better setup, better spray, better coverage. You know, and I was unaware that it would have been that big of a difference, I was going with the cheaper to save people money. And unfortunately, it didn't work as well.
So, just for clarity, they did a first pass down the middle. Built us for that. You asked them to come back, they did two passes, they built us for that. And then they came back a third time and built us for that, right? So you're saying, I think you said that it wasn't their fault that they just went down the middle?
The, the one down the middle, the employee told them to do that.
Their employee or ours?
Which I, then I say, I called them, I said, that's not what we wanted. So, unfortunately. They were quick to come back. And do as they requested, but unfortunately, the product just doesn't hold up that well here. And, but in places of cornwallis, where there's a little bit more clay, it seems to be working fine, so.
So, should they not have, sorry? I think this is my question.
But, I think I'll go ahead and after.
Should they, should they not have realized that going one pass down the middle would, would be?
You would think, if they were told that.
But it's an employee and an employee, and it wasn't.
Yeah.
The, the people in charge.
Well, Mister Chairman, to Chelsea, my experience with it is, and I'm not, I never saw what they used, but if it's medic chloride. Four distributors uses calcium chloride, and I'm, I'm not sure what they used, it'd look to me like meth or, I need some chlorides, but I don't know that. But you're putting it on, this year, when they put it on, the roads were powder dry. And you do not, if you have a wet road, you put it on, it works lots better, so. Anyway, I just wanted to show.
It does seem to be rejuvenated, whatever.
Yes, and that's why it works, thank you.
Mister Chairman, Chelsea. Is this a company that's new to doing this, or is this the company that's done this before?
We haven't tried them for a very long time.
No, but I mean, are they doing it elsewhere, I'm not familiar?
Oh, yeah, they do it elsewhere, yeah.
So, and, and you know what the width of their boom was, because I mean, if they get on the center of the road, if the width of the boom is enough to, to give you coverage, that's all that's required, because you're trying to get the tracks, right?
Yeah, they only had. So in order to bowl round, they had to do two houses.
And they get to twelve foot.
Which is something. Well, you know, a twelve foot boom would cover both tracks, if they go down the center. But, I mean, if it's company that's done it for a while, I, I agree with the Council McGregor, I, I don't think the municipality or the taxpayers should bear the full cost.
Okay, so, I guess, I'll just put my two cents into you, this, I did see it, and I did see it passed our, our dust control, and that dust control was working adequately when we went through with the, that was that we had. We gave some instructions, so there's some liability on us, as far as the first pass goes. It has to be, we give instructions, and they follow our instructions, that creates a problem for us. We are into this, this is done for, on a per, a partial basis, where people ask us to do it. They pay, we get it done for them. Maybe what we should be doing now on is let all the ratepayers pay for their own, get to own companies. That may be the best way to do. But in any case, this one has come forward, we've got to deal with this, are they entitled to be paid? I don't see how you can say no, completely. But. Mister, I just, I, I understand an employee told them what to do, but in a sense of, they are the applicators, if somebody told me. How to say wire a plug. I wouldn't necessarily, like, I know steps to make that work properly, right? I'm assuming the applicators will know how to, you know, lay their product down properly to create the, the result that is wanted. So, I think more of the onus is on them for maybe not knowing the, where their spring, what kind of content the dirt is on, because if they are well aware that. You know, there's certain products that will work better in certain areas, I think that should have been taken into consideration when retaining our, our fees and.
Yeah. Again, I'll go back to some responsibility and part of the responsibility, like the municipality, we directed them to do not a complete pass the first time, so that, as seen, one and two being. Something definitely has to be paid. So that I see one and two being something definitely has to be paid in my view, because it did accomplish. What had to be done and those two applications were required because of the first pass instruction.
Chelsea, that's my view. How did their are the costs line up this year versus previous years on this?
Even with the the three thousand bits.
Like for for the ratepayers, did it work out the same?
Yeah.
So it didn't cost anybody any more money, just that it wasn't as quality as job.
That's where we're at. And also Fisher, for to for is distributors is magnesium chloride and this one was calcium chloride. You had it backwards. So, okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So I think they're pulling that process here.
Yeah.
And I put forward a motion to amend.
To, well, you first have to do the reconsidering because it's. Have as now hasn't reconsidered, so we can reconsider it then. And do the second one and then we can do.
Oh, like you haven't read out the motions?
No.
Okay, so.
Right. So do we have? That's for reconsideration. All in favor of reconsideration motion? Opposed? Here. Okay, so we had resolved if administration be instructed to withhold payment for dust control services due to trying to qualify your application. This would have to be defeated to carry on further.
This is the motion that is being considered or being moved back to.
Right, yeah. So. Oh, that that's a, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, yes. Okay, so I'd like to move an amendment motion. So I would amend this to withhold payment for the first application. In my opinion, sorry, I'll wait until.
Okay, so. That was the first one that we did, right? So. That was the original resolution that was decreed, so we have, or that was approved in the in the two meetings ago. It's broad board again with the reconsideration.
Yeah.
So this has, I think we're, our men have to go into third resolution, Councilor Gregor. They have to bring this one back and defeat it. This is the original motion.
So we have to defeat it.
We have to defeat that or else leave the state in the books for back to our work. Nothing's stated.
So we're defeating the holding payment.
And I can't move an amending motion.
You can do it in the next one.
But this is the one I wanted to amend, not the next one.
Well, the next one is a.
So you want to.
This full full payment, you want to just partial payment.
Correct. What motion have we on?
Be instructed to withhold payment.
Yeah.
Then the next one. To pay them.
But this one has to be defeated before we go on. If that's not defeated, we can't move on further. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can.
Yeah, so that would be resolved that administration instructed with whole payment for dust control services due to product quality under application. So we have to have a mover and a seconder on that. That's our original motion. We take the original motion that was there and the people that moved it and seconded that two meetings ago. Meeting.
Reconsider, so it's a new mover and.
Okay, so we can do the mover and second. This is the resolution. This is where you're at. So we we have to defeat this one. It's not bad to mover in a seconder, vote it down, and then we can move to the next one.
But once it's back on the table, I can I can.
Watch it back and see if it's amended, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right. Sorry.
Yeah.
It has, this one has to be defeated first because this is original motion that was being reconsidered. So. So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, withhold administration to withhold payment, so.
You defeat that.
If you defeat it, then we can go back in.
Then we can go back in with the next resolution.
Okay, we don't.
Yeah.
If it's not defeated, we can't, we don't move forward. Very, nothing's stated.
Yeah.
But this there is no motion, so. Need a mover and a seconder.
So just to clarify, if this is not defeated, we're withholding payment. That's the end of it.
Right.
If this is defeated, then we can have another motion to pay or to partially, but we have to defeat this first.
That's right.
Before we can bring that motion to.
Pay it. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Seconder. Seconder. For that. Okay, all in favor? No, you're not, you're not gonna be. Counselor, because you have that stage, did you understand the original motion? So if you if you. If you're in favor of it, then nothing's paid. If you're against it, it goes on. Okay, cool. Understand that? Everybody understand that this is the complex? This is a problem with negative resolutions.
So to go forward, we need to defeat this motion.
You can't, you can't. So all in favor? Opposed? Okay, if you know, it's just to beat it, we can go forward. I wouldn't want to give you guys a rub, excuse me. Okay, there's a stupid. Now we'll go into this one. Be resolved and following the successful reapplication dust control product payment and fully rendered to the vendor. We have the. Boomer in a seconder. We still have to add that for this.
Yes.
Wish to move it. I was in Proton, seconder. Counselor Hatch, okay. Now, Councilor Gregor, if you wish to make an amendment to the resolution.
No, well, I think I would be amending it to completely change the motion here. So I I think shouldn't we be defeating this one? And then starting over or?
If you want me to amend this, I just think. If you do, if it's defeated, then of course that is a different single together and you'd have to.
Yeah.
Back to where we're.
Okay, so I'll move an amending motion that be a resolve that payment for the second and third applications be permitted to the vendor. And take out that whole part of the following a successful application.
Okay, that's your. Be resolved that. Paying to be rendered to the vendor for the second and third only applications only.
So. Does that mean that we find how much the difference is?
Well, we'll get there.
Okay.
Okay, so second and third application is open. We have a seconder. You know, they can run an amendment motion. Second area, I'll say Jones.
Really? Yeah, I I agree with that. Not necessarily like the second and the third, because we were, we instructed them to come back or restructuring them the first time. And they came back and did it how we wanted to the second time, but that didn't work. And then they came back the third time. So I guess we technically, in terms of what we told them, the the first pass and the. In the last pass or the third time they came back, right?
I know it doesn't. Whether you agree with with the end of motion, just second. Okay, so.
Uh, who do you care? Can I speak just for a minute? I think people got to understand the history here. We kind of went to them. We had no. Guidelines or whatever guidance when we first went to them. We got to get it done. We got to get it done. Both managers were away for a week. And. It was just new person on our side and a new person on their side and. That management wasn't here and it was applied by our, what we told them, so. And we are at fault as well, so.
Oh, I understand. That's true. Yes. Yeah, I. Sorry, you done?
Yeah, basically done.
I I completely agree that we we take responsibility for a portion of this and that, but I think as a business. You know, whether managers away or not, you know, like Counselor Jones says, if somebody tells them to wire a plug this certain way, they're not going to do it, right? So I'm all I'm trying to to, you know, accomplish here is that we, the municipality isn't taking the full responsibility for this. I I'd like to see some shared responsibility. So my suggestion was the the first pass. And that they take responsibility for the first pass because I, in my opinion, that's an error that they made, that they should have known better.
It was definitely in there.
That's why, that's why I suggested not paying for the first pass. If Counselor Jones has a different thought, I'm more than open to that, but.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just, I kind of, I'm agreeing with Counselor Jones in a way. If we didn't have a staff member out there when they were doing the first pass, to me, it'd be a totally different ballgame. We had a staff member out there. That they only put one pass down the center. If they hadn't had anybody there, then I would go back to them and say, well, maybe we shouldn't get the first pass, but. You know, and then we instructed them to come back the second, third, so that's all I'm thinking along the lines, so. We're on board. Counselor, Mr. Chairman, that. Do I understand, right? We paid for three applications. And. We were charged, we were charged for three. Out of that, did the. Did what we charged the residents, did that cover those three applications or was the municipality on the hook for some of that?
No.
Chelsea.
No, that's how cheap it was. It covered the three. That's why I was quick to say, oh, come back again.
So.
Why aren't you covering it up?
So how did we arrive at a price charging as if we were going to get one application? Like, did we overcharge or?
I don't think they put down enough. Well, the first time they obviously didn't put down enough.
No, I guess the question of Chelsea is that if we if we put the charge to the ratepayers.
Yeah.
How, you know, if that was going to be a reduced amount this year compared to previous year, why would we charge that much? Why would be sending, we'd be sending bills for that much?
It was supposed to be the same as we.
The previous year?
Yeah, and I don't think that.
We would have been refunding if it went better.
I mean.
We would have been refunding if it would have been better application than.
Yeah, oh, yeah. There was one.
Any doubts of questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like it just seems odd that we ended up with three applications. The first one went sideways. Yeah. The second one also didn't work. So then there was a third slide like I. I, you know, I get that maybe there was some fault in our part because our employee maybe was involved in the instruction on the first one. But what happened on the second and the third, like, I mean, there has to be some accountability from the business that does this this job.
Yeah, I guess when you look at it, though, if we charge the same amount as we have in previous years, they got the same results overall. The job they've done, how we got there, I guess, is the question and and. Whether it's a learning situation.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'm lying. I'm thinking they just didn't put down enough. Let's do it again. There's money there. Let's do it. Let's make everyone happy. Right? But in reality, it was a different product. We've all seen it last year and it worked great, so I thought, well, maybe they just didn't put down enough. You know, and as for our error, I mean, it wasn't the employee's error, it would have been my error because. They they were just instructed to take them out, right? And I figured they would have just known, which is on me, so.
Let's wait for Counselor Fisher to return. Mr. Chairman, yes, comes this council Jones have a different idea of this that he has requested to speak on, so. Counselor Fisher, you will be eligible to vote on this on these two resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, my. Yeah. My preferred is. Paying for. The big responsibility for the. The first pass and then the last pass. So instead of just.
Well, we can, we can do this amendment and if that doesn't pass, then you can do another amendment if you wish for those two.
So, Mr. Chairman, to Chelsea. Were all of the passes billed the same amount or were they different?
They're all different.
And and would it be a fair assumption the first one was probably the lowest?
I I believe so. I believe.
Okay, so the amendment is to pay for this second and third pass of this product. Only. Moved by Councilman Gregor, seconded by Counselor Jones. All in favor of the amended motion? Opposed? This best. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor.
I believe we have.
Oh, that, and then, so the original motion because of that will have to be defeated. It's pay full amount. So.
It was a good.
We just, sorry, we already, so we we, the motion to amend was carried.
Yeah, the original motion wasn't. And voted on. Who moved it seconded at motion? So all in favor of that original motion to pay the whole bill?
In favor of paying?
Yeah, sorry. Was the total bill?
Defeated that.
I thought we defeated that already.
Like that's been amended.
No. That was the original one that we didn't vote on.
The original one was to not pay. Then it was to pay them in full.
Right. And at that point, it's amended. You amended the original motion of paying the whole bill.
So this is amended by to pay second and third.
Right.
That's fast.
You have to do the amended one first and then you do the original motion.
Not the original, no, the amended motion.
The amended motion was to pay second.
You have to vote on the amendment and then you have to vote on the motion that was amended, right? Not the original motion.
No, no, this 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 motion, I thought original motion is one that we're paying the whole bill. Right?
Yes.
So we're not voting on that.
So we voted on the amendment.
Right.
Now we're voting on the motion.
Motion, which was?
The amended motion.
No, who made it?
Yes.
The original motion no longer exists.
Right.
We've amended it.
Correct.
So now we have to vote on the amended motion. It it's it's duplication because we've already voted on the amendment. It would be very strange for the motion to pass, but you have to vote on the in motion.
So 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 let's let's get this straightened. So where the the motion now is to pay for second and third pass only, no other charges.
Yeah. It would be, okay, this motion.
Yeah.
So if you want to read that out, maybe.
Be resolved that payment be rendered to the vendor for the second and third application only.
All in favor? And I hope, yes. Opposed? That's what we want to know. Reconsideration, sorry. And an amended. Okay, we've resolved that the proposed fiber paths for the north side of Road one thirteen west in the southeast quarter eighteen eight nineteen W. As outlined on the map attached to correspondence dated in August twentieth twenty twenty three, tomorrow, now be approved, subject to the fiber offset being one meter from the property line and all road crossings being directional drilled and work area restored to its former state. Somebody please turn that. Seconder. I'll speak to Gregor. Discussion. All in favor? May be resolved the proposed cyber path for the north side of Road forty five north, east of Highway ten and southwest quarter twenty three eight nineteen W and northwest quarter fourteen eight nineteen W. As outlined on the map attached to correspondence dated August twenty eighth twenty twenty three. From now, be approved subject to the fiber offset being one meters from the property lines and all road crossings being directionally drilled and work area restored to its former state. So let me say, who's that? Counselor Hatch, Secuder. Counselor Gregor, discussion. All in favor? Okay. Purchase municipal right of way be resolved that a request to repurchase a portion of municipal right of way located south of where a potential provincial tram highway number two and southeast 21717 be denied for my letter shall be provided to the applicant, outlining that the municipality does not currently have any interest openly or other use, given this topography and requirement for bridge construction should ever be over. Let me please win that. Counselor Gregor, Secuder. Counselor Hatch, discussion.
Can we just clear clear this up a little like that's right beside me? So this is where.
There's a map on your in your information?
I can.
I looked at the map and I didn't have a clue where that's.
Goldie.
It was goldie. Okay, Goldie Boys.
It's specifically an access one to the river. That's that was what we have to adhere that if we ever needed to get to the river for some reason for a water levels or any water projects or anything like that, that was the reason. And we don't have any plans on developing, but just to have the auction open, we don't know what the future will bring, right?
But she requested to buy it. It's something that doesn't have anything to do with the real estate or to do the sale. Illegal invasions in your package. Yeah, saw that. But so but could have to take a slice, including a bridge. Oh, this is head, which is extremely costly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the way the.
Yeah.
Do you have a picture?
Okay. Do you have any other? Return.
Well, she wants to first, she wants to purchase a road allowance there.
Oh, the road allowance like straight to the river?
That's your place, right? If you don't tell me all the work.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
Right here? Yeah, I'm on the north side. That's you right there.
Yeah, so we're talking here, right there. Well, there's an actual.
So Chelsea, just since you mentioned from a municipal basis, that we ever needed access to river, was your access on the pier would be on the on the north side going down through the old part of society.
We just went through this with somebody else, and we we didn't sell it to them, right? It's the same thing. We do, we are not prepared to give it up, just in case. But we have no plans on developing it. If that's that's what she wants to know for the sale, to be able to tell them that this isn't going to be developed, you know? And we have no funds on doing anything. It's just.
Well, requires a bridge for access. Okay. Okay, so all in favor? Okay, whereas the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation falls on Saturday, September 30th, 2023, whereas both union and non-union contract recognized day is a historic holiday. Therefore, be resolved that two ways transportation be open on Friday, September 29th, 2023, from 2:30 to 6:30 and closed on Saturday, September 30th. And be further resolved that news of loss be closed on Monday, October 2nd, so it's a treat. We remove that. Counselor Gregor, Secuder. Counselor Donald. Discussion.
Counselor Donald. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just wondering, are other municipalities doing this to we know or? We have no idea.
But I think because it's such a busy time of year for people that to have a day in the womb. I don't know if, you know, even if these hours are long enough, if we want to extend that by an hour, it's whatever. As long as they have a time to bring stuff.
Well, I think it's a resolution there for as it speaks. Counselor, I'm going to do a question. So just further to what Counselor Gregor, is this has this been a holiday before? I'm not aware of it. Has this been a holiday in the past?
The last two years, I think.
Two years. All in favor? Okay, be resolved that your single disposition by commercial contractors policy trans 012 be approved effective October 1st, 2023. They move that. Counselor Gregor, Second Counselor Hatch, discussion.
Counselor. Can I have some background on this?
Well, we wouldn't have that for you, yeah. This happened when we had contractor fill up our waste transfer station bins with overload shingles. So now we have set it up that there's definitions and as to what has to be contacted office for. If you're going to have so many shingles, they have contacted office prior to dumping them so that we know and that payment for the amount so we can get extra bins for that for that point.
The citizen.
For commercial.
For commercial. Right into the policy and procedures manual. Okay, so there's kind of a fine line there, isn't there? Like, if I hire a contractor to come and do mine, I mean, those are my shingles. I guess if I do it, deliver them, it's not a problem. But if he delivers it, you're calling it, we're calling it commercial.
It requires to the amount that's being brought, not specifically contractor. So if you have certain amount of bundles, it's basically.
So I would have to call ahead too.
Yeah, you would have to, and just so I can be prepared for everybody else to have space to dump their. Perfect.
Nice to see the policy. Is that it in front of you?
Yeah. So it was mentioning just in passing that this was a that there would have to be five days notice. Is that?
Kind of a commercial on a commercial basis.
Yeah.
That's because it takes them a while to put this event, because they're busy. I mean, if for some reason we get one sooner than the grade, but that five days at least gives everybody enough time.
The under the commercial basis, one of the reasons, thing we looked at is that every commercial, whether it's if you say, like you said for yourself, you take your own shingles, take them out there. That's why still with that contact or with public works, but commercial, never they do a job, they could charge, they charge the occupant, the person who works for us. Or just suppose of shingles. So to take it there and say, well, that's what it appears, I don't agree, that doesn't click. So is there a with regard to shingles, do they necessarily have to go in a bin? Can they not be buried on site?
Different environmental laws now that we can't be burying things like we used to.
Well, I know I know that, but is that specific to shingles? Because, I mean, obviously, it would take away a huge cost for us if we can bury shingles as opposed to.
Counselor, we're just a transfer station.
Yeah, I know, but we do.
It's not a land.
We don't bury.
We do have a firm pit, and we do, I'm just asking the question, challenging your asking question.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that just through that.
I know.
Speak to you speak to the chair.
No, okay, Mr. Chair, but if I recall, we had to go into the Oakland Transport Station and load up the shingles that were in a pile on the ground, if I recall. I'm just just on that, but I'm sure we had to when they come into their inspection. That's anyway, I just wanted to get back to where we're. We can bear.
Mr. Chairman, just to provide some clarity, because I think what I'm hearing is not actually the case with the policy. So this only applies to commercial contractors. There is nothing in the policy that requires a resident to call ahead, pay for anything. This is only.
No payments for for residents.
For there's a small shingle dumping fee, correct, I mean? Or a small, how does call. The way are the bylaws currently, and it's under review. If it's a small load, it's different, like if you're reaching like a shed, for example. If it's a house, it's considered a larger load and the. He's reading it saying commercial contract. It probably should be revised to say.
Well, that's.
The fee structure covers that, though.
We were trying hard to not have this. This was supposed to be a benefit for ratepayers because we were having the issue of bins being full. So we're trying to deal with that, but we also didn't want to stop somebody who was re-shingling their shit on a Saturday and showing up with a dump or the waste transfer station, sorry, and and discarding those. So those would still be charged, but they wouldn't follow this policy of needing to be prepaid or have advanced notice. So that's just for clarity.
This policy is set for commercial, our fee structure is set for everything. Fee structure is there for residential as well, as you're saying, for depending on the loan, right?
Hmm, yeah, okay.
So I think what he's asking, if somebody is doing their own, how is she not necessarily getting somebody to do it for that? That is not considered commercial.
Without reconsider commercial, and we would still have the issue of essentially having a fold in.
Yeah, I think we have that with our fee structure that we still want this to. On that test. That's going to be the fee structure.
And I think the fees are set up now, you don't contact.
No, no, there's a charge for it.
Yes.
Right.
But they still could show up with the household shingles and fill it, right? We're aiming for.
Bring progress out of commercial. Yeah.
The word commercial is kind of throwing everybody off today.
Yeah. Twenty-one to sixty bundles. That's under the procedures. Mr. Chairman, so like I. Do we not trust the people to pay us if once they call? Is there a need for them to prepay to come down and prepay or show? Yeah, if we don't trust them to the point where we can issue a bill and they can prevent payments through that.
Well, I think if you look at accounts, we have had to chase contractors on a continuous basis just to get paid for the fees.
But do we, and I'm aware of that from previous experience with counsel, but do we tire everybody with the same stick? Like, or do we just say, you know, for the guys that have not done it in the past, retreat that typically that's an administration issue. It isn't, aren't you? Probably a contract might be to have to roll down and prepay and not really know there might be a second payment, right? So they get it from now, pay again. And just it just seems odd to me that we're asking people to prepay for an unknown.
Mr. Chairman, this this all started, Counselor Rome, because of Wanda calling me on Saturday morning with a contractor rolling in with a whole load of shingles and filling the bin. And now, all of a sudden, we have no room for anyone else's product. And this is why this all came to play.
But I think there's been a bin problem there at times with bins not arriving and so on and.
That's that's why we do the five days in advance, because we can call in advance, but we never know how much garbage is coming.
And, you know, I don't question the five days in advance. I, you know, now that it's been staying okay. I I just feel a little uneasy about asking people that to prepay because we don't trust them to pay once we issue a bill. But that's whatever, you know, whatever, whatever council has has done, they've done, but same. Right, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, we resolved to agree with MWM Environmental be extended for another one-year period as proposed included it, including a percentage increase for 2023 under the consumer index increase whereby the extension is allowed for additional input to the province on the transition of the recycling model to a full extended producer responsibility model. So this is delayed by the provincial governments. We're looking at extending our contract with NWN. We have somebody move that. Counselor Gregor, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, do you know what the percentage increases?
None.
Done of the consumer prices, they.
Not until we won't know until probably in January, because it's an annual.
CPI.
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor? Okay, so be resolved that the application be made under the municipal economic development infrastructure program for the following projects in my border. That that list is on in your material showing the. Go 107 West, go 107 West, well, et cetera, et cetera. That's literally one, two, three, six items we're requesting from that fund. And.
We should be.
It's on the table.
So the second page outlines the different projects that we've come up with.
In our portions.
Yeah.
These are projects that we have come up with on the council.
So you can apply under this grant for up to three projects. And you have to end the grant.
Identify.
Identified for second after.
Did we categorize it?
They're just listed here in the note particularly.
Right, so we have to come up with a.
Yeah.
So we have to. In the then this motion. Resolution.
Yeah, which projects?
I should get a move on the second or carry on. Can you move it? Counselor Hatch, Second Counselor Fisher. Okay, so next item is to identify the three projects that.
Counselor. No, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering with regards to the. If we if we go through one of these, I'm looking at the fire truck, like the unit three. So if we put in for that grant and it doesn't get approved, then could we could we still budget for it? Is what I wondered.
Well, I think that's still the budget, the.
Yeah, okay, no.
Capital budget.
Yeah.
So that you just take it out of the capital budget.
Okay, thank you.
What I guess is.
I I was. To get us started. Yeah. And let's see how the different process will go ahead. Okay, so I would prioritize widening kind of run through the slew as number one. Just recognizing that that's the safety issue that is currently expensive project. I would probably prioritize the paving on Park Street at number two. And I would prioritize the fire truck as number three, mostly because it's not eligible for gas tax, whereas most of these others have. The ability shows a high gas tax.
What else?
I do agree with that widening as power road is being number one. That is very important to get that done.
I support the three that. I'm good with the tower road for sure. Has this been before council prior to today, or do we have to consider this?
Yep.
Just today. So is this something we can deal with at our next meeting after we've had a chance?
No, we have to. Funding has application has to be in.
October 6th, this is the round, that's why we're.
So when we get into these funding things, he always give you a short timeframe to work with them. Being our meetings are one month apart, makes it difficult, but.
Is, Mr. Chairman, is a. Is, Mr. Chairman, is a, is a fire truck eligible under this?
Yes.
Yeah, it is, but it's not eligible under the gas tax.
So, so, mileage, year of the current one, that type of thing. Mr. Trump, I know it's, the, the box, it was, what is it, used truck, and the box was basically rotted away from, that held it on, so they, I know this winter, or, or this summer, they'd taken it out to the colony and taken the box off and had reinforced to try to hold it on, because it's budgeted for next year, so I know it's all rotted out underneath, and-
So the truck, the chassis itself is an old chassis as well, or is that the one that was bought from Brad and Fire Department, that?
No, 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 this was bought, it was a used chassis bought, I don't want to pay it, believe, like, it's, and I can't tell you the year for sure, it's probably twenty years old, I think.
What's on the long range traffic, that should be replaced, can't secure anything?
Any else have thoughts?
Well, if some of this, if some of these can get done through the gas tax, that are eligible, we should do that through the gas tax, and, and, yeah.
Do your favorite fire truck then, too?
Well-
If it is not gas?
I guess.
Or very good, different ones?
The gas tax is such a finicky thing, I don't, you know, they could, we have money available in that fund, for sure, gas tax, so.
So which, when, which are your-
Widening of Tower Road, for sure, is the first.
And?
And, yeah, I just know from municipal costs, the snow plowing on the road one oh seven, where we have some elevation issues, is a big cost to the RM in wintertime every year.
As you, the, the one oh seven, that second one, that's what you're-
That would have been my choice, but-
Two, okay. Number three?
So, and then, I guess the fire truck, yeah.
Counselor Fisher?
I'm sticking with the ones that have already been prioritized.
Counselor Jones?
I'd have to say, one is widening Tower Road, and then the elevate the half mile, I guess the fire truck, sure.
So, Counselor Rohn?
What's the, what's the difference here on the two, one oh seven WT intersection north, and then elevation, like, what do we?
We, I would like to combine those into one project, so that we might have eligibility to do them both under the same thing, basically, those are huge snow traps, waste so much time, falling in there, it's a safety issue.
So, carry on this funding.
Well, one oh seven-
So, it's, it's the one that goes up towards your, or up towards your place?
It tees at Turkey Ranch Road.
Yeah.
It runs north.
Yeah.
And there's a huge couple of hills there that we spend major amounts of dollars in wintertime for unplugging those to get red traffic through there.
So you're talking, you'll be replaced in that area?
Yeah, right where, who lives there now, is the top of that hill, Bill Andrews or at the bottom?
Rick Andrews at the bottom, yeah.
Okay, a quick question, how does, now let him fully understand this, how does a fire truck fall under infrastructure?
Within the, within the-
Okay.
What is, what's, is there a limit on per, per job?
Like, higher months?
Sure, dollar month? I gotta want to, I think one of the things we spoke about earlier is, you know, if one item in there, it's gonna be so complex that they're gonna say no to the whole bunch.
Right.
So if we put those two together, we're gonna be okay at eighty thousand? And use our gas tax accordingly?
I would think so, yeah, why not?
But that would be-
I mean-
So that would be my, if you're still asking me on that, that would be my choice, would be to combine those two, get it done properly, so one would be Tower Road, two would be Turkey Ranch combined, and three would be the fire truck.
We not gonna do one rural, one town, and then-
But, but that, this doesn't matter, the one thing that's, that's gonna get it done, we still have gas tax, if we can do paving with, that's, you know, in town, so, I mean, that, we're a lot better off with that, I think, than use tax money for rural, if we can't use gas tax.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Counselor McRae, do you have yours? Will you give yours, or any changes, you know, do we mind?
No, I didn't get to mine.
Yeah.
Okay, so, what I have is widening Tower Road is the number one. One oh seven west, sounds like that will be two, number two.
A combined.
Combined, combined, like, number two, and then number three will be the fire truck. All right?
Just one comment, we are expecting to hear very quickly on this, so that we can, because we can't start until we know anything about the funding.
You can't be road construction in the winter either, so.
Yeah. It's just, in previous years, we have to leave.
Yeah.
A long time.
Yeah, usually it's given for three months.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, is there a timeline for completion, like, if you got approved in December, like Mike said, you can't, in road building in the winter?
I don't believe there was a timeframe, because of the, the structure of it. Being infrastructure and getting into October, I think they realize that that was not gonna be done in the direct spring.
We can't start before it's approved.
We can't start. All right, all in favor of that resolution with the three items? Okay, be resolved, in accordance with section three twenty-six and three hundred of Municipal Act, the taxes added and canceled listings provided by the provincial assessment branches supplementary taxes and the following months be approved, taxes added forty-six thousand eight hundred and one dollars and sixty cents, taxes canceled eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-four cents, all right, please move that, Counselor McRae, second, second here, Counselor Hatch, discussion? All in favor? Be resolved, in accordance with section seventeen five and seventeen seven of the Menace Municipal Assessment Act, the farm use assessment information provided by provincial assessment branch has changed and used taxes, the following amount be approved, payback taxes added two thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-six cents, so if you move that, Counselor McDonald, second here, Counselor McRae, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't recall seeing something like this before, and I'm assuming this is, this is one farm land that's switched to commercial or residential or something.
Yes, you're correct, this is the first time we have this come before us, just a little background, if somebody that has property that is farm only, they can apply to be assessed based on the farm use value versus the market value, the farm use value tends to be considerably lower, but if that property is no longer farm used, then we go back and assess them at the market value, the farm use.
Pay it back, yeah.
Payback, yeah.
So, I've looked into this and haven't applied to it yet, but basically, if you haven't applied to this specifically yet, you're, you are getting, even though it's farming slange, you're not actually getting the true value, like, you're not, you're getting overtaxed, as a, it's like, there's a possibility that you can subdivide, there's a possibility to going commercial, that's what you're gonna tax out, you're not getting taxed at actual farm use.
Yeah, they call it market value.
Yeah, so you have to apply, and, and then it'll be reduced, and then if you do it, end up subdividing, then you get taxed five years previous.
So just called them through assessment branch, this is not done by us?
Yeah.
So in this particular case, a residence was brought onto the top, so that changed, it is no longer totally farm used.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, whereas homeowners, you heard, audited PSAB had adjusted deficits of twenty-three thousand six hundred and eleven dollars in twenty twenty-one, and sixty-four thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars in twenty twenty-two, whereas homeowners utility had a twenty twenty-two audited working capital surplus of sixty-four thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars, which is fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty, forty-nine dollars less than the public utilities board minimum requirement of eighty thousand two hundred and thirty-three, therefore, being resolved, and municipal local lease request the public utilities board authorized homeowners utility deficits of twenty-three thousand six hundred and eleven dollars in twenty twenty-one, and sixty-four thousand two hundred and nineteen in twenty twenty-two, this said deficit to be recovered through transfer from the accumulated cash surplus accounts of the utility, an amount of seventy-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, and a deficit rate by around one dollar and eighty-six cents per thousand gallons of water sold over one year, so please read that, Counselor McRae, second here, Counselor McRae, discussion? All done through public? All in favor? Okay, be resolved, at this ready meeting, now adjourned to an in-camera meeting to discuss the financial matter as per subsections one fifty-three, one fifty-two, three B three of the Municipal Act, and all matters discussed in camera are confidential until discussed in an open meeting, as per section eight is the one D of the Municipal Act, please move that. That's second counsel McDonald, all in favor? Okay, be resolved, that this in-camera meeting does now resume back to a regular meeting, please move that, Counselor Fisher, second, Counselor Jones, all in favor? Okay, so, be resolved, that public works proceed with drainage reconstruction from Four Street to Mill Street to a maximum fifteen thousand dollars, using local contractor work by expenses shall be extended from gas tax. Will we please move that, Counselor Fisher, second counsel McDonald, all in favor? Okay. Be resolved, that three of those, no adjournments, we need to gain a, at nine AM, municipal office, please move that, Counselor Jones, second counsel Hatch, all in favor?